Call the meeting to order, roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon. Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Baggarly.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, I have one. Item number 11 will be rescheduled to a later date, so we'll remove item number 11. Entertainer motion to accept?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda with the one addition of removing item number 11.
That's them right there.
All those in favor? I'm sorry?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I believe the individuals for number 11 have arrived, so we can leave that on the agenda.
So, we'll go back and we will approve the agenda as amended in that -- no, we don't have to do that.
No amendments.
Approve the agenda with no amendments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Open forum, Bob Score.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
The agenda you proposed was just the agenda, not consent items, or did you mean the consent items?
I meant the consent items, correct.
I have a couple comments on A and B on there, if I may.
Okay, we'll pull items A and B.
On item A, council minutes, during the council meeting last, two weeks ago, I had mentioned that the staff should be aware that anything spent over $10,000 should be to travel through their proper committee, and I didn't see it in the minutes, and I know that I stated that. I would like to amend the minutes so that is in there. And then on item B, I see the utilities is holding a hearing for the proposed water increase and electric rate increase.
And he?
And it's at 11:50 a.m. on a Monday, if I'm not mistaken. Why would they hold a hearing for a rate increase at 11:50 a.m. on a Monday? Why not 7:00 o'clock at night, so you can get carpenters and plumbers and teachers here? I don't know if we need to suggest that to them, or I don't think we can amend their minutes or their proposed hearing date, but I don't understand. At 11:50 a.m. on a Monday afternoon, on a 20% rate increase on water and 4.2% on electric rates, it affects a lot of ratepayers, and I don't know how to go about that, but it just seems strange to me that they're at that time.
Sure. Maybe I'll see if Councilmember Johnson would like to comment on that. Councilmember Johnson attended in place of Councilmember Dacken and Councilmember Plowman, so not sure if you're prepared to answer that. I know we talked before the meeting, and you said you had your notes at home, but do you want to address that at all, Councilmember Johnson?
I don't remember at the meeting if they actually said the time or just said the dates of the hearings. I can't remember. I got the materials on short notice before the meeting from Mr. Dacken, who had an unforeseen conflict arise, so I don't recall that, but I tend to agree if, for purposes of a public hearing, on a utility increase, that having it at 7:00 in the evening would be, I think, most appropriate for the citizens to attend.
I'm not sure what to do with that.
Well, we could have our city administrator talk to the general manager for the utilities, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that would be fine, but I mention this for the public's sake. I mean, it's, yeah, that would be.
And I believe the date on that is the 17th, if I remember right?
No, I believe they are intending to have their public hearing on the 9th, and I'm not sure if they have already advertised that public hearing or not, but I believe that is what the minutes reflect, and that the intent was to have, for the utilities to have their public hearing on the 9th. I know they are also coming to the Finance Committee on Monday evening at 4:45 to talk about the process for their rate increase further. But I will certainly contact the general manager and verify the time and such of their public hearing, and discuss with him the concerns.
Okay.
Sure, I'll move to file those.
It's been motion made and seconded to file the items removed from the consent agenda. You seconded that?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign? Motion carries. Now to you, Bob.
Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street. Just got a couple quick questions, and if I can get somebody to give me an answer on this, I'd appreciate it. During the land transfer for jots, there was a spur track mentioned. Haven't heard a whole lot about it. I picked up a little bit what the EDC Steve Rehnquist was talking about on open mic the other day. My question is, questions, where does the spur track go? How much land is it taking? Who's going to own this? Who's going to take care of the maintenance on it? Now, I heard that this bypass land was going to be, some of the land was going to be taken by Enamet Domain of one of the same farmers that is having some land taken Enamet Domain for the airport safety zone on the runway. Now, that hasn't been mentioned. I'm just curious if this is going to happen again, because the council had mentioned maybe the utilities take Enamet Domain for that substation, which never happened. It seems like we keep going after the same guys for Enamet Domain, otherwise they just happen to have the land that everybody wants. I don't know how this works. But if I could get some of these questions answered by the correct person here, I'd appreciate it. A lot of times, it seems to fall on deaf ears. I don't want that to happen. If I can get an updated where the spur track's going, I don't know how much is it supposed to branch out in the industrial park, because it's kind of been hush-hush, and not maybe intentionally, but I just would like to get some more information on it. And I know they're running for another grant, applying for a grant. Now, if that's just because of jots, well, and that's the way I'm taking it, and I don't really want to feel that way. If jots needs that spur track so bad, then why don't they spend the money and put that spur track in instead of waiting for the grant to come? It just seems like there's a lot of coincidences here, and I'm just curious and want some answers. So, if somebody'd answer that down the road, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you have the information you need on these questions?
Yes.
And then, Shirley, do we have someone to get back with them?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation to the mayor and council from Kirsty Kurth, from the executive director from the Wilmer Area Food Shelf. Welcome.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Calvin, members of the city council, city staff, those here present, and also those watching from home. Good evening, I'm Kirsty Kurth, executive director for the Wilmer Area Food Shelf. We are located at 624 Pacific Avenue Southwest in Wilmer. We also have a location in New London. If you're familiar with New London, it's in the old clinic. We also have a location at Ridgewater College that is located in the campus ministry building, and that food shelf is specifically for students, traditionally and non-traditional students. A year and a half ago, we started a process of looking at our strategic plan and doing some updates to our mission, vision, and impact statement. Our new mission statement is responding collectively, using community resources to relieve the suffering of poverty by providing food assistance. Our vision, hunger is no longer a barrier to the health and well-being of the people in Candy Ojai County. Our impact statement, neighbors helping neighbors. Wilmer Area Food Shelf provides the opportunity for neighbors to come together through donations, fundraising, food drives, and volunteering to provide for the hungry. WAFS is committed to helping all those in need with an open mind in finding innovative ways to respond to poverty with respect and dignity. The food shelf has been operating since 1982, and we have been a vital resource for our neighbors in need. On the handouts that I gave you, there's a three-page flyer packet there. It goes over who the past coordinators or executive directors were. I've been with the food shelf since 2005 and have seen dramatic change since then. There is a list of also our current board members. To qualify for the food shelf, we do ask that individuals bring proof of residency in Candy Ojai County and ID for each person in the household. Because we are a USDA facility, we cannot mandate or force individuals to bring those items, although about 98% of our clients do bring in that information for us. We serve an individual household once a month, so they can receive 12 full food orders. Some families do need a little bit of extra help, depending on their situation, and we will work with those families that need additional food services throughout the year. At this time, I'm going to be a little unconventional, and just ask the city council members and those that are willing to just take a moment, and if you would, shut your eyes, and imagine or put together a picture of who you think comes to the food shelf. Did you imagine a young mom that found out she was pregnant and kicked out of the household? She's now going to Ridgewater and has a child, and to tell you, she will be successful in her life. Did you imagine the young veteran suffering from PTSD that's homeless? Did you imagine his wife and their three children? Did you imagine the 70-year-old lady? Her husband just passed away from a very long illness. Sure, she has the house, a car, but unbeknownst to her, the rest of their savings has been spent. She comes in crying, not knowing what she's going to do. They've always given to the food shelf through their local church. Yeah, you might have imagined the town drunk. He comes into the food shelf, too, almost every day. But do you know why he's the town drunk? Do you know what happened to him in his life? Do you understand why he needs the assistance he does? It's also that lady that was a member or that lived out at the state hospital for years and is now on her own. She can't work. It's also a mother and a father working. The mother broke her ankle, they have two children, and unfortunately, her short-term disability has run out because she's had many complications. Those are just a few of the individuals and families that come into the food shelf. In 2014, we served over 2,201 households or families. There's a breakdown there on your sheet of the household incomes. From 0 to 10,000, there's 376 households. From $10,001 to 15,000, there's 576 households. It goes all the way up to $30,500, or $35,000, where we had 89 households. These households are broken down. To qualify for the food shelf, a family of one has to make under $20,000. And you see there that over 800, well, over 900 families that come into the food shelf make under $15,000. And those are families, it could be, they're on SSI, Social Security, it could be a number of reasons why they make under that amount of money. But for one individual to even live on $20,000 can be pretty tough nowadays. In 2014, we served a total of 10,187 households. That's meaning that those 2,200 came into the food shelf on an average of 4.6 times a year. Yes, some comes in monthly, some come in once, but the average is about 4.6 per household. We served over 31,000 combined individuals of adults, children, and those over 65. We distributed a record-breaking amount of food last year of 1,201,000 pounds of food and over 15,000 pounds of non-food. Non-food includes that shampoo, toilet paper, those types of items. So, we've seen, even though our numbers of those served has stayed pretty much equal in 2014 over 2015, we did see an increase in the amount given out. And part of that has to do with our daily giveaways of fresh produce that we receive from local stores such as Cashwise, Walmart, Cub. We also receive daily bread items from Sara Lee. We receive items from Target two times a month and Runnings once a month. And we now are very happy to say that we are receiving items from Aldi three times a week, which is great to have a new store in our community that is already supporting the food shelf. That says a lot. Household makeup or those receiving assistance, about 80% of our households receive some type of assistance, anything from MFP to WIC, reduced free lunch, breakfast program at the schools, energy assistance, housing assistance, or medical assistance. The other 20% that are not may not qualify. Usually, those are individuals or families that have had some type of major accident or something has went wrong just frequently, so their income for that time span does not qualify them for receiving any type of assistance, but if they are out long-term, then they would, of course, receive assistance. Other general information is those who we serve really follow our demographics of our community. Caucasian is about 54%. Latino is about 33%. Somali is 5%. And then the rest, African-American, Native American, is just about 3%. We now have an Asian population in our community that we've seen come into our area, and so we serve about 0.5%. So, it really follows the demographic of our community here. Also, a very interesting piece is that we serve at least one family in every zip code in our county. Yes, the largest amount, because Wilmer is the biggest city, does come from Wilmer, but we do see someone from every zip code, so every small community in our county. So, we reach out to everyone in need. Financially, last year, we raised over $272,000. 88% of that came from local donations, be it through churches, individuals, local businesses, the United Way, Candy Ojai County, or even civic and community groups such as 4-H, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, something like that. So, we are very proud of our community and the support that they show to the food shelf and all that they do. Besides the financial support that we receive, we also receive hundreds, thousands of hours through volunteers. In 2014, we had 14,302 hours of volunteer service. That is 6.8 full-time employees or equivalent to, and the value to that that is given by the independent sector for volunteer time is $347,600. So, we are always looking for volunteers. We usually have approximately 100 volunteers. We have anything from drivers that go and pick up our local donations from our grocery stores, to those that work directly with our clients, to those that stock shelves, distributing a million pounds of food. At any one time, we have about 40,000 to 50,000 pounds of food in the food shelf. That's over, that's probably about 40 semi-trucks full of food when you think of it on that basis. So, that tells you what comes in really goes out. We don't have room to store that amount of food. That is also why we are in the midst of a capital campaign and needing to expand our facility. When I started in 2005, we distributed about 80,000 pounds to 160,000 pounds of food. So, we've, how many times is that, that we've grown? So, we are adding on a receiving bay, so that our semi-trucks can back up parallel to the building, instead of having to be out on Pacific Avenue, which causes a traffic jam for a couple of hours while they are unloading. We are also adding on a small office space in the front of the building, so that we can repurpose the offices that we currently have to make more space. And if any of you have been over there, I know some of you have been, and you've seen how busy, crazy it gets, we do what we call the food shelf shuffle. We have one door that goes into our shopping area. That also is the same door where the food has to go from our receiving area to our warehouse. That is the same door that we have to bring out all the food into the lobby. So, we have people going in and out of it all the time. So, internally, we are looking at creating another door in our main area, so that we have a very clear in and out. We'll be receiving in the back, so that our food will be coming into the warehouse where it will be processed. We will be opening our lobby up, so that we are able to service our clients better and also more efficiently and more under safety. We're very thankful that everyone is patient when we get busy, because it becomes a log jam. So, with that being said, I do invite all of you, whether you're here in the chambers or whether you're at home and watching, to come down to visit the food shelf, to see it, take a tour, and understand how you help support the community, how you help us be able to help our neighbors in need. Just a few more items, and then I'll take questions if there are any. Regarding our capital campaign, we started out with a $350,000 need or goal. We have received now $40,000 in an HRA grant. We put in from our reserve funds over 17,000. The Board of Directors, presence and pass, put in over $3,000. We have anticipated grand dollars of 23,000. We received from Genio $25,000, from anonymous donor $10,700. From ACMC, we received $3,500. And from individuals, we've received now $1,100, leaving now our total to be raised $226,000, which we are hoping to have that raised by fall. Of course, March, though, right around the corner, is our major fundraising month, and that money that is raised in March will go into our general budget, because our general budget is about $310,000 this year. So, our big fundraiser that we have going, March 2nd, is our Chili Fest. We invite you out to the community center at 5:00 p.m. It's a free will donation. And also, we will be having our annual Radio for Relief, being sponsored by Lakeland Broadcasting, hosted by the Wilmer Fire Station once again, and that's on March 27th. There'll be a lot of information with flyers and stuff around the community. So, again, I invite you all to come to visit. We could not do what we do for our neighbors in need without all of you, without the residents of Wilmer, of Candy Ojai County. We just couldn't, whether it's the volunteer hours, whether it's the dollars that you donate. We really could not do what we do without all of you. And so, I thank you, and thank all of those watching tonight, and would entertain any questions, if there are any.
Thank you for that excellent report. Any questions from council? Councilmember Plowman?
Hi, thank you. It's good to hear your annual report, and thank you for what you do for the people who fall through the cracks in our community. Do you have any idea, you mentioned the city of Wilmer, you know, the boundaries or geographical lines that we have are kind of convoluted. As far as saying the city of Wilmer, a lot of people have Wilmer addresses, but they don't live in the city limits of the city of Wilmer. Do you have any more accurate information on that, or as far as it's broken down?
We pretty much go by zip codes. Sorry, I have it right here. So, I can tell you from 56201, zip code is 1,620 residents that receive services from the food shelf.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Dacken? And Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kirsty, thank you for your report. Thank you for mentioning that veterans are part of this. I'm sure most folks, if they read the West Central Tribune, have read articles about the dire need of homeless veterans in Minnesota and in the other states also. So, both our Department of Minnesota Legion and the Department of Minnesota Disabled American Vets, we have a homeless program. As the service officer for the Legion in Wilmer, and we meet frequently there, and as the adjutant for the disabled American veterans, we have funds available. Our state and national organizations have funds available for vets, so no vet should go homeless. We have a motel room set up in town for homeless vets, so we are ready, and any assistance that we can give you, we're ready to do that. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And just to address that as well, as we, I did go ahead and pass that information on to my intake volunteers, so they are aware that if there is a veteran that comes through, that we have opportunities to assist them. And we also work, just kind of sidelined with, several other organizations in Wilmer. The Goodness Coffee House had some free meals donated to them from somebody, and they informed us, so we are working with them as well. So, we really try to work hand-in-hand with a lot of organizations, and if anyone has information that would benefit us, so that we could help our clients, I would invite them to please call me, and it's always good to have that information.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I think I mentioned once before that one of our members, Ron McIndance, went to Sock Center and visited Eagle's Nest. And that's a very nice facilities for a homeless vet that needs a place temporarily, and so I think we're in good shape locally to handle that part of the population anyways, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Kirsty, for your report. Just a quick question. It says on here you have 3% of the people are homeless that you serve. Is that maybe 30 to 60 people, is that you're saying? And if you know they're homeless, do you refer them somewhere?
Yes. So, some of them may be couch-hopping. That's a lot that we see in rural communities, is that they may be staying with somebody temporarily. We work very closely with Heartland Community Action, also the Salvation Army. Once the... Once the Family Promise gets up and running, as they are now very close to hopefully having everything in place for that, we will be working with them as well. So, we definitely do refer people over to other agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Christie, for all that you do and your staff and all of the volunteers. We're really fortunate that we have you, and I'm just wondering, how do we compare with cities of comparable size? You distribute like 1.2 million pounds a year. Is that average or below average, or how do we compare?
We are, when you, when you look at numbers based off of population and service levels and use percentages, we are probably, I think, like the fifth or sixth largest food shelf in Minnesota. We compare to that of St. Cloud's Catholic Charities in percents. I would guess, and I don't have numbers off, I could probably do more research on it, I just don't know off the top of my head, that being one of the top five in the state, that we probably serve more food than others. We also do a couple of other grocery giveaways where we, twice a month during the summer, we have a produce giveaway from Second Harvest Heartland, so that serves additional families, where other food shelves don't have the capacity to be able to do that or to host produce drops, so they're unable to have that. So, we're fortunate in that way, that we've been able to maintain a very good level of service and even increase some of it with like the produce drop and stuff.
Great, thank you. Please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. On behalf of the mayor's office, I'd just like to thank you for your good work. I was looking at all of your coordinators, executive directors, and of course, Agnes Johnson was a neighbor of ours out by Pennox, so nice to see her there and the nice work that her and Jack Lynch did when they did the fundraising, they did over at WEACT now is what we call it. And then, of course, you know, working with you, and we started up the Radio for Relief over at the fire station, so you guys do fabulous work. I mean, it is so, such a blessing to our community to have you, so thank you for your hard work, thank you for your volunteers, thank you for what you do in this community, because we wouldn't be the strong of a community without you, so thank you so much for your hard work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation or a consideration of a 2012 Small Cities Development Program loan to Highland Apartments. Jill Banksen?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jill Banksen, Candy High County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and I am before you tonight to ask for your approval of a 2012 Small Cities Development Program loan to Highland Apartments Limited Partnership and approval of the loan documents, which I believe are in your packet. This request follows January 20th council approval to expand the 2012 Small Cities Development Program target area to include Highland Apartments. To give you a little background, in 2013, the Wilmer HRA was awarded tax credits from Minnesota Housing to refinance and renovate Highland Apartments, which is a 78-unit apartment building in town with assisted living services that serves disabled and elderly persons over the age of 55. To complete the financing package on the renovation project, and the construction budget is about 3.6 million, the HRA is requesting a loan not to exceed 166,681 from the city's 2012 Small Cities Development Program. This is a change in how we actually use the Small Cities Development Program funds for the rental rehab activity. Typically, a project owner receives only up to 30,000 and signs a repayment agreement which states that as long as the project serves long compersons for seven years, the loan is forgiven. Because this is a large amount, over 166,000, we'd like the loan to be repaid for future revolving funds in the Small Cities Development Program to use for potentially future projects. So, Highland Apartments Limited Partnership is a partnership between Great Lakes Capital Fund and the Candy High County HRA. Candy High County HRA will be the general partner in the project and run the day-to-day management of the project. And so, with that, I guess I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions for Ms. Banksen? Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Ms. Banksen.
And then Councilmember Johnson.
Jill, we talked about this at community development in December for a little bit. So, who's paying back the 166,000? The people that apply for the?
Highland Apartments Limited Partnership, which is the owners, the partners, partners within the limited partnership are the Candy High County HRA and Great Lakes Capital Fund, who's the private investor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Jill, my question was, I guess, is this just part of the 3.6 million you referenced, or is this additional funds?
It is part of it. The actual total package for the whole development of the project is 6.4 million, which is to refinance Highland Apartments, the current debt on the building, all the soft costs, all the financing fees, syndication costs, and the construction budget. So, this is just a part of that total budget.
And then I noticed that this is a single payment loan, but they don't pay it back till, what, 2045?
Yes, that's right.
I don't think our, we got a problem, hopefully we won't have any inflation. Thank you.
Other questions in the council? Are you ready to vote?
We have to approve it.
Are you ready to?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, it's been a motion, seconded?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you for?
Thank you. Appreciate your work, appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you.
Presentation to the mayor and council on the salty discharge requirements. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Tonight, we've invited Mike Gerbitz in to visit with you regarding the, he's from Donahue and Associates, regarding the salty discharge requirements, there's your new environmental requirements or continuing environmental requirements for wastewater operating systems. We've been working for a few years on this now with Donahue and Associates since the new, since the new plant has gone in and these new environmental regulations. This is, I would say, the next step in the process, that of public information as well as a roadmap for the continued compliance on this subject.
Welcome, Mike. Haven't seen you for a while here, so welcome back to Wilmer.
Good, thank you. Good evening. Again, my name's Mike Gerbitz with Donahue and Associates, and I've had the good fortune of working with the city of Wilmer and your various wastewater issues for the last 10 years, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the next issue that's facing the city of Wilmer. And fortunately, as we'll, as we'll talk about tonight, I think tonight's news is good news. It's an issue that we've been working with MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the staff members from the city of Wilmer for a couple of years now. There's a lot of back and forth and some uncertainty up until this point on how this issue was gonna finally move forward, but we, I think we have clarity at this point, and I think now's the perfect time to brief the council on this issue. And the issue is, the wastewater treatment plant is gonna get a new set of limits, limits that they haven't had historically, and they're collectively referred to as salty discharge limits. But I think to talk about and explain how this is gonna move forward, the path forward, and what MPCA is gonna allow the city to do, it's important to go through some of the history on how we've gotten to this point, and some of the things that have happened in the recent past. So, if we go back to 2005, city Wilmer was a community with an aging wastewater treatment facility adjacent to the mall, the source of many odors and many odor complaints, and a facility that was aging and was nearing the end of its useful life without a major upgrade. At that time, it was also facing a new effluent limit, something else that the plant had to treat for, and that was phosphorus. We asked the MPCA if there was anything else that we should design a new plant to treat, and they said, no, just phosphorus. So, this community decided to address those issues back in 2005 and spent the years from 2005 planning, designing, and building a wastewater treatment facility. Everyone's well aware of that program, I'm sure. But the point is that this is a community that addressed their wastewater issue willingly, gladly, by spending $80 million. Okay, and that's important context for what MPCA is ultimately gonna allow this community to do. There was a wastewater issue, Wilmer said we're gonna address it, and they were willing to spend $80 million. Shortly after the commissioning of the wastewater treatment plant, the city also said, we have stormwater issues, and we as a community need to get our hands around those issues and look at them in a comprehensive manner. That work resulted in a, in a report that was written in 2012, okay, 2012, and it was a comprehensive watershed management plan, okay, and that took a citywide look at the various stormwater issues facing the community, and that also recommended a significant capital investment, okay? Collectively, the steps that were outlined in that comprehensive plan, that plan itself, I guess collectively, requires an investment of $24 million, okay? Also real money, significant capital investment. So, the city then, in April of 2013, received a letter from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the MPCA, and it said they were gonna revise their, in their next permit, in the next permit for the wastewater treatment plant, which we expect to receive, or the city should expect to receive in 2015, there would be some new requirements, okay? There'd be a revised, a slightly revised phosphorus limit, and we probably wouldn't be here tonight talking about that because the plant is able to accommodate that really without any real significant cost or burden. But they also included entirely new set of limits, the salty discharge limits, and they're listed there in the table. It's collectively referred to as salty discharge limits, but it consists of bicarbonate, chloride, hardness, TDS, and specific conductance, okay? While your existing plant isn't designed to remove those type of constituents, none of your neighbors' treatment facilities are designed to remove those parameters, and in fact, conventional wastewater treatment plants aren't designed to remove these things. So, you received this letter in the backdrop of having recently spent $80 million, having a stormwater plan that says the community is ultimately gonna spend $24 million, that was a tremendous financial, or potentially, it seemed, it could be a tremendous financial burden. Looks like we got cut off there. The MPCA recognized that conventional wastewater treatment plants probably can't meet these limits, and if you read the last sentence in the yellow box, they didn't, typically, they just mandate, right, when you need to be in compliance. If you're gonna get a new permit, you need to be in compliance in four years. If you're gonna get a permit, you need to be in compliance in six years. In this instance, they didn't do that. The last sentence reads, "If the permetee cannot meet the WQBells," those are water quality-based effluent limits, these salty discharge limits, "upon permit issuance, the permetee must identify a compliance date that is, quote, 'as soon as possible.'" Okay? So, what's, what's possible is left open to some interpretation, and that's what we spent some time looking at on behalf of the city of Wilmer and talking to MPCA about. Just to give you some idea of how out of compliance you'll be, what we're looking at here are some graphs. On the, on the left-hand side is bicarbonate, right-hand side, total chloride. Diamonds represent historical data, recent historical data. This is what's coming out, or has come out of the back end of your plant. The red line is your final monthly average limit. The dash line is your daily maximum limit, and I just want to quickly illustrate that you're far from compliance for those two parameters. If we look at hardness, a little closer to compliance, TDS, well above compliance, and specific conductance, well above compliance, okay? So, you're gonna get this new limit, you've got this treatment plant, they can't remove these things, and it seems that, or it's apparent that you're a long ways from compliance. Something needs to be done. So, the PCA said, tell us when you can get in compliance as soon as possible. So, it starts with what's it gonna cost? So, we went back and we looked at a couple of different alternatives. The most cost-effective alternative is to actually address these parameters on the front end of your wastewater treatment plant, at the source, okay, at your drinking water plant. It's even more expensive than what we're seeing here, even more expensive if we try to address those parameters at your wastewater treatment plant. These are very difficult things to get out of water. The intent is, or the most cost-effective way to address the problem is to prevent these constituents from even getting in the water, train, change the way that you're treating the drinking water, the water that comes to all of our homes. The cost is shown in the table here, estimated capital cost of $44.7 million and an increased annual operating cost of $2.6 million, okay? Very significant costs, particularly in the backdrop of, of the funds that have already been spent on the wastewater system and the funds that are planned to be spent on the stormwater system. So, near-term compliance is unaffordable, okay? And really, the way it works out, as long as you're paying for that wastewater treatment plant, this community, by EPA's definition, can't afford to meet these limits. When I say by definition, EPA says that if a household, if the average household or the median household is spending more than 2% of its household income on its wastewater bill, it's unaffordable. And by definition, then, this would be unaffordable, okay? In light of the $80 million in current user rates, this compliance with this would be But fortunately, the EPA understands the fact, or the current EPA understands the fact, that there's only so much public money to go around, and we need to maximize, I guess, the return on those investments in infrastructure and on water quality. And so, they've, if you look at the, the yellow box, this is from January 2013, okay? This new EPA policy is called integrated planning. EPA is saying, we need to look at what a community is spending to solve their wastewater issues and their stormwater issues, and collectively, and this is the first time they've ever done this until 2013, collectively, what a community spends on wastewater and stormwater needs to be affordable, okay? The Flexibilities on the Clean Water Act, regulations and EPA policies law local governments to continue to maintain existing wastewater and stormwater systems while making progress on clean water goals in a manner that is sustainable and within a community's financial capability, and that's a really big deal for this issue, okay? They're willing to look at what is, what is a community spending on stormwater and wastewater? And if some of those, if some of that spending exceeds the capacity of that community, then they maybe need to look at it in a prioritized fashion, okay? Maximize the value on, on its capacity to pay. So, we wrote a series of letters to MPCA, we went through the analysis, we said, we think, the city thinks, excuse me, the city thinks that it would be, it would provide a better, better water quality benefit to the local watershed if it prioritized by spending money and solving stormwater issues rather than the salty discharge issue, and fortunately, MPCA agreed with that, okay? So, they, and it's really kind of unprecedented, they agreed to a 20, and this is the good news part, by the way, they agreed to a 20-year compliance schedule. Some of your other neighbors are getting eight to 10 years, okay? That's also really good news for you guys. They've said, fine, we're gonna allow Wilmer to comply 20 years from now. That's a generation from now, it's 2035 would be the ultimate compliance date, and some of your surrounding communities and other communities in the state of Minnesota are gonna be complying in eight to 10 years. That's very significant because they're gonna go first. They're gonna, there may be legal challenges, there may be variances, there may be precedents. By the time this becomes an issue that, that Wilmer needs to be planning for, there may be precedents that benefits Wilmer, okay? And they're gonna spend their time and energy and resources to, to find those variances. So, you're gonna get a new limit, you have 20 years. You have 20 years to comply with it. I think it's also important for the council to understand, though, that this integrated planning strategy by EPA does require progress, demonstrated progress. Each year, and that's what's shown on this slide here, each year, on both the salty discharge issue and on the stormwater issue, the community needs to submit those, an annual report. Okay? On both stormwater and wastewater. You need to document 12 months' past activities and performance, 12 months of spending and cumulative spending, and 12 months of future activities. And then at the end of each five-year permit cycle, you need to write, I guess, a report that looks to the end of the compliance strategy. So with your next permit, you need to write a 15-year plan, after that, a 10-year plan, and after that, a five-year plan, that just looks down the road on where the community's going and what it's doing about these issues. So I think it's important for council to understand that every year, you need to submit a report. You need to document progress and things that you've done. The good news here is also, but MPCA isn't prescribing any particular steps. Okay? The community preserves flexibility to go about this in a manner that it thinks is being responsible. And they haven't said, "You need to spend X dollars per year, or you need to do these few things annually." You preserve the flexibility to move forward in a manner you think is responsible. So to wrap things up, you're getting a new, you're getting new limits, got 20 years to comply. Your neighbors and other communities are going to go first. I think that's a tremendous benefit for Wilmer. But you will need to do something every year, and then something a bit more every five years. With that, I'll open it up to any questions anybody has.
Are there any questions by the council? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say thank you, but that's kind of redundant. I keep saying, "How long can we put up with the EPA?" It's just, they're unelected power, first of all. They don't have to go through the Congress or the President. They write their own rules, but how do we know that these levels aren't going to change during the 20-year period that we're going to do this? Now, we're going to be taking a million or more dollars per year to dump into this 20-year plan, and you say that the other city's going to do it before us, so it's to our benefit. But is it? Because what's inflation going to do? It's going to probably cost us more down the road. But how do we know that the levels won't change? And if we're out of compliance with a new plant, holy smokes. These other cities that don't have new plants, they must be way whacked out. I mean, I have very little faith in the EPA, and I will bet anything that they're going to change compliance levels five years down the road or 10 years, 10 years, and then, I don't know. I'm at a loss for words to describe how irritated I am with them. It's just, it's taxing our city and our ratepayers. I mean, here we are, we got an increase in our water rates and electric rates coming next week, or in July of this year, I believe, but the hearing is next week. How much can people take? I mean, it's the taxpayers ultimately that are going to pay this. And I don't know if you can answer those questions, but what about the level? Are they going to change the levels as we go along?
Yeah. First off, these are unfunded mandates, and historically, they were less forgiving than they are in this instance. In this current climate, they're willing to at least consider what it costs, what is the cost of compliance. I think that's a recent development. And then expanding, expanding the spectrum to include stormwater, I think that's positive. But these are new limits. It is hard to imagine a limit that says, "You can't take your drinking water and put it into Hot Creek." That's effectively what these limits are. And it's for that reason that I think it is good that other communities are going first because I don't know that there's maybe good science behind these. I don't know that it has the conviction of the regulators that some of the other limits have. And I think that it's very likely those that face these costs in far less time than Wilmer are going to challenge the science and challenge the cost-effectiveness and whether or not it's the best use of public funds. I mean, public funds need to make, infrastructure projects, public infrastructure projects need to make people's lives better. I don't know that we have a lot of evidence that this spending will make people's lives better, will make the community of Wilmer better. I think as time goes on, maybe, maybe some of your neighbors will convince the regulators that this isn't the best, that these aren't really appropriate limits, or maybe the best use of public funds.
I remember the open house out there, and each council member was at a stage of the waste treatment plant. I had where it came into the plant. That stuck me. But we took the tour, and at the end of the plant, I believe I'm stating this properly, that the water that was coming out, we saw it coming out down the bottom, was clear. And I believe they said, "You could drink this water that's going into the Hot Creek down." And how much more pure can it be if we could drink that water? Again, I just don't understand where we're going to get the money.
One thing that, I agree that common sense needs to prevail ultimately, but I lost my train of thought. Common sense needs to prevail. Maybe I'll end it at that.
That's a good thought.
Councilmember Anderson, Johnson, and Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being here and providing that. Give me a little clarity, if you can, on the EPA. They're doing this under the Clean Water Act, and then the MPCA polices it? So if that's the case, are all states policing it the same way the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is viewing it?
EPA is ultimately in charge of the Clean Water Act. They have delegated the policing to MPCA in the state of Minnesota. We are not seeing all states move forward in the same fashion that the MPCA is. Other states, chloride limits have been a problem everywhere for a long time, and people have found ways to avoid strict chloride limits and permits. So it's with that also that we're somewhat hopeful that over time, the regulatory picture will change with these salty discharge limits. Not every state is enforcing these water quality-based effluent limits the same way.
So that said, I mean, our legislators may have some input. And I realize they don't write the rules, but I think maybe that's something we should be talking to our legislators about.
Yeah, possibly. And I, yes. And I'm confident your neighbors will be talking to them also. They're facing this issue far quicker than you are. There's also, and we have been working closely with Messherb. Do you remember what that stands for? There's a coalition of wastewater dischargers here in the state of Minnesota that is an advocacy group for communities like yourselves and St. Cloud and Rochester. They're tracking this very closely. They have attorneys on staff, and I think we're far from hearing the end of this.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your comments. I'm no expert on water quality or, you know, water analysis, but obviously, these are some chemicals that have raised some concern. Your comment was that chloride's been a concern for some time.
Yeah.
I guess my question would be, where was the EPA and Minnesota Pollution Control when we were building our plant and spending all this money? And they wait till we're done, and then we get a friendly little letter that tells us that we're not in compliance? I mean, I'm a little troubled by that. I can't believe that these chemicals that are classified as salty discharge weren't on somebody's radar before. They're chemicals, and I assume somebody knew that they, you know, shouldn't be in the water or should be in reduced quantities. So I'm just curious to know if any...
Fortunately, I can answer that. I mean, I was involved since in 2005 when all the planning was done, and in fact, I think we've got a memo aimed specifically at what regulations are going to be with, we know with certainty, and what they might be. And it was a collaborative process, working with MPCA, and these unfortunately were not parameters that were listed as a potential future effluent limit at that time.
And I assume we have to have a license for our plant from the state and from the EPA?
Yep, a permit.
Okay. So they gave us a license, which would indicate that we must have done it right, and now they got the second thoughts, so to speak.
You did it all right at that time.
Thank you.
Changed the limits.
Councilmember Nelson.
My question was, at the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities meeting last week, there was some conversation about proposing some legislation to work with, I believe, this subject. And I was just wondering if you were aware of that, or if there's anything we should be working on in support of that, or if you think that is even a possibility.
I am unaware of that, but I'm going to work with our people in our Minnesota office, and we'll do some research on that and report back to staff on what we find there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mike. You've done a lot of work for the city. A couple of quick questions here. To what level are we exceeding the limits right now? What percentage are by, I know you touched on it, but percentages might be a good way to start.
I think the most egregious violation would be on specific conductance. So the limit is, let's call it 1,000, okay? And you're averaging about 2,500. So two and a half times the limit. Chlorides or TDS, the limit would be, let's call it 700, and you're averaging about 1,400. So about twice that limit. This is, there is no simple solution to this. This is, these parameters are as high as they are because Wilmer relies on water softening and distributed systems, and that's contributing the TDS and the chlorides. And that seems to be really the only cost-effective way to address this issue is to deal with the way the drinking water is treated.
All right. Thank you. I have another question. 20 years to comply, and this was, this came up in 2013?
Yep.
This letter to the city?
Yep.
Okay. I don't remember hearing anything about it, but...
And the reason for not reporting until now is not to keep anyone in the dark, but there was a tremendous amount of uncertainty, and we had to put a good story together, I guess, to get the integrated planning thing to work.
Okay. And are there any other alternatives that we can do versus the big picture of the waste remodeling the plant? Is there, by each individual in our community, are there certain things that can help us immediately reduce that level?
Maybe move the needle a little bit. Those are some of the things that Colleen and her staff, city staff, will be looking at, that we're going to go out into the system undoubtedly and get some data. Once armed with that data, maybe they can find some simple things that make it better. But ultimate compliance is going to require some whole-scale project. I do think, though, tracking, and I'm sure staff will do this, but tracking what's happening with Messherb legislatively, just tracking this issue and keeping an eye on it is a wise use of time because I think it's very likely, in my opinion, that's my opinion, but I think it's very likely that there's going to be some relief to these communities.
Yeah. One final question. You mentioned the annual report that they're, during this 20-year period, we have to show some change or some effort. Is that something that we do in-house? Or...
That's what we're envisioning. Yep.
Okay. And your job at this point is you're going to assist us, or is that something we can do on our own?
We'd be happy to assist. I think it would probably start with the community, and if they found that they needed an engineer involved, we'd be happy to help. But I think for the most part, everyone's envisioning this being something that the community does, for the most part, on its own.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mike, for being here tonight.
You bet.
This isn't something new, then? We've had salty discharge for years?
Yeah.
And it's just because of the chemicals that we use at the waste treatment plant?
No, actually, Wilmer's hard water. And the hardness is removed with home water softeners, industrial water softeners. It's removed out in the system, and that contributes chlorides, which contributes to TDS and specific conductance. So it's really, it's in all of our homes in the community and in our business places that have water softeners that are probably the biggest culprit to this issue. And that's why the solution is at the water production facilities, if and when that day comes.
Does it, the chemicals that we use in the winter time on the roads, does that go into the holding pond and stuff? Does that...
I think the community's going to learn more about that. We wouldn't expect that much, but you're going to have some leaking manholes, and, you know, you may see a slight increase seasonally. You might. But you saw those diamonds well above the limit predominantly because of just home water softeners and distributed water softening.
And I'm not a chemist or an engineer or a scientist, but what's the problem with salty water, then? Goes downstream?
Yeah. Evidently, people have looked at the aquatic species in the stream, the health of the receiving water, and found a correlation between the health of the receiving water and the aquatic communities that live there and these parameters. That's how they justified a limit. And that's why potentially someone could challenge the science. You know, it has happened where regulators have made limits, and you look at the data, and they said, "Well, you ask them, 'How did you come up with the limit?'" And then you look at a chart, and they say, "Well, we have this data, and we see a correlation between, you know, A and B." And then you look at the chart, and it's a shotgun blast, and they draw a line through it, and they said, "There's your correlation." There isn't a good correlation. So someone may challenge the science.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the information tonight. Just for simple clarification regarding the 20-year compliance schedule that we've been graced with.
Yeah.
The SDRP and the watershed management plan, are they from here on out, are they going to be tied together now as a package deal when it comes to timelines and whatnot?
Yeah, that's a good question. They really are preserving, I think the answer to that is, what you see on the screen, you need to submit these reports for the stormwater plan, the SDRP, and the watershed management plan. But you need to, you can submit them individually.
Okay.
And I think they are decoupled moving forward. And so you preserve all the flexibilities possible for those two separate issues.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Berman.
You know, it's kind of ironic, you know, federal mandates, saying no more to federal mandates, unfunded especially. But in this case, you know, just as far as filling out this report and complying with this timeframe, it seems a little ironic that they mandate municipalities, forms of government, to do what they decide to do, yet there's not even any funding for any training, even for some of our employees. It seems a little ironic. It's a little frustrating. You would think that if they were really trying to do the job to be thorough, they would somehow be able to address the issue of how to have our current staff clean, for example, or the people in-house be able to do it. Just wondering if there's been anything in this bill that's addressed that or not. There probably is not.
I haven't heard of any financial relief.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks for your excellent report, as always. You do a great job for us. You know, it's interesting when I take a look at, you know, we basically have on the book spending about $104,000. Then you're saying that we have to spend another 44, I mean, $104 million. Then we have to spend another 44.7 million for a total of $148.7 million. And, you know, as Councilmember Nelson stated, when we were down at the Coalition of Greater Cities Legislative Day and we were talking with our legislators about this particular issue, you know, we said to them, you know, "Where does it stop?" I mean, you know, Wilmer, I mean, we should be in a position where we're in excellent condition, but all these other communities, and I... condition, but all these other communities, and I appreciate what you're saying that we have 20 years to look at it, but all these other communities have to come along and come up to where we're at today to get their plants where our plants are, where our plant is. It just blows me away to think that we've spent this kind of money and really you're coming back to us and telling us we've gotta spend millions and millions more. And so, thank you for the report that says we have 20 years to do it, but at the end of the day, you know, we've gotta put the 24 million into our, into our stormwater. If we're gonna follow that, we're gonna have to put that into the plan. We're gonna have to have a plan in place. And again, like Councilmember Brahman said, more unfunded mandates. You're telling us what we have to do, but we have no, no input on it. The other thing is, is that these mandates should be supported by science. In my understanding is the mandates that they're putting out, they're not supported by science. And, you know, so somebody's just like you said, charting it on a map, drawing a line through it and saying meet this. You know, I think when you look at trying to operate a business or operate a city, you know, you get to 95 percent, the last 5 percent takes you a lot of, lot of work to get the last 5 percent, the 95 percent, you know, we can kind of get there. I think we're wasting time on the last 5 percent that probably doesn't make a big difference. You know, Councilmember Christiansen stated when we were out there, they said we could drink this water coming out of here. Of course, none of us took a glass full. But at the end of the day, if it's that clear or what you said in your presentation, the water has to be cleaner than it's coming out of the ground, out of our faucets. That's a problem, folks. And that, and I agree totally, it's an unfunded mandate. We have to be responsible. Government has to be responsible and that's why we need to spend time at the legislature and talk to our representatives and senators. So, thank you for your report. Colleen, thank you for being here. Your staff does an excellent job. We are so grateful for what you guys do out there, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess back to you, Sean. Presentation, Mayor and Council of Stevens Engineering and Civic Center Improvements.
Thanks, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. This next report is from Stevens Engineering. This is Scott Ward is here with us tonight to give what will end up being an executive summary that I believe was included in your packets of a full report that they put together for the HVAC, sorry, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration system at the Civic Center. So with that, I'll let Scott take over and go through the executive summary and inform everybody and take questions on what he's found.
Thank you, Sean. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. I'm gonna start by apologizing. I tried taking a few days off work last week and, of course, ended up getting sick because of it, so hopefully we can make through, through okay. And I also appreciate the fact that I am after the wastewater item because the numbers we talk about will be much smaller than that, so that's always a good thing, so. Again, my name's Scott Ward with Stevens Engineers and with me today, Jim Manning with Gosman Moore, the mechanical engineer on the project. We had the pleasure to work with Troy and his staff on an evaluation study of the Civic Center facility last year. And what I would like to go through is just the findings of that report and then talk about any, answer any questions you might have and talk about potential future projects at that facility. So, the Wilmer Civic Center was built in, the original building was built in 1979, so getting up to 34, 35 years old. The Blue Line Arena was then added in 1998 and the mechanical systems in both those facilities had had some updates, but for the most part are the original systems to that facility. So they are getting up there, they are past their, their life expectancy. The goals of the study, I should back up a little bit. The goals of the study were to, the main one was to look at replacement options for the ice system, so the refrigeration system and the ice rink floor. Both those facilities have separate systems, so there's two refrigeration systems in that facility and two ice rink floors. And then to look at the waste heat capacity of those systems, what we could do with the waste heat, how we could make those, those systems more energy efficient. The other major scope of this project or this evaluation was to look at the HVAC or dehumidification systems in the original facility, so in Cardinal Arena. So what we found was, on the, on the ice system side, which is really the, the big mechanical system in those facilities, both systems are operated by an R22 refrigeration system. R22 will be phased out in the year 2020, will be phased out of production. You can still use R22 after that point, but it'll become, it is already becoming more expensive to find and to get your hands on, so, you know, it would be prudent to start planning for the replacement of those systems. Both of those systems are, like I said, are beyond the 35, 34 years of, of age, so they are, have exceeded their life expectancy. The ice rink floor in Cardinal Arena was replaced in 2000, so that floor is relatively new and has lots of life in it. The ice rink floor in Blue Line Club was also installed in 1998, so that is relatively young, so to speak, for a concrete ice rink floor. So both of those are in good shape. It's really just the refrigeration systems that we're focusing on at this point. We looked at many different options for the ice, for replacing your ice system. We, we are involved in many different ice rink projects from, from Alaska to New York to Wisconsin, so we're very familiar with the different options of replacing your ice systems and what's all available, from CO2 to ammonia and so forth. So, we looked at seven different options for replacing the ice system and those are all outlined in the executive summary that you have. Those options range from doing nothing to just minimal repairs to your existing system to full-out replacement of your system with a CO2 system or ammonia system. So those costs range anywhere from, you can see anywhere from $180,000 up to 4.2 million. The ice, and just to give you a little bit more background on the ice system, what you have now, as I said, is operated off R22 that has high global warming potential and is, and is the reason for it being phased out. There are other types, I call that a synthetic type refrigerant that are on the market that you could use to replace the R22. However, at some point, those will likely be regulated as well. Europe is always kind of the leader in this and they've already indicated that some of those other refrigerants are gonna start being phased out or they're gonna start regulating those refrigerants. So what that really boils down to for you is, and for other, the other 180 ice arenas in the state of Minnesota and elsewhere is that really we're starting to look at more at natural type refrigerants. That would be ammonia or CO2. We just finished the design of the first CO2-based ice rink in the United States and that's in Anchorage, Alaska. And that has some very promising future to it and that was one of, two of the options that we outlined for you as well. As far as the mechanical systems go, the dehumidification system in the existing arena is original. It's a mechanical type dehumidification system. It has not worked since you changed over to an indirect system in the year 2000. The air conditioning system, I believe, just went out recently over the past year. So you can see that the age of those systems are really starting to come into play and something needs to be done with those systems. Dehumidification is extremely important to an ice arena and to your building because as you operate it in the shoulder seasons, August, September, October, dehumidification, keeping that air dehumidified and keeping the moisture out of there is very important both for energy conservation and for your quality of your ice sheet. So not having dehumidification really hurts you at this point and also is potentially doing some damage to the building as that moisture penetrates, the insulation and so forth is absorbed by it and potentially, you know, could cause problems with your building systems as well. So it's, so that is why the first project or the first phase of the project that we recommended and that Troy's looking at or the city is looking at for that facility is, is the HVAC upgrades to Cardinal Arena. And, and I'll just, I'll let Jim kind of talk a little bit more about that first phase of projects and then we'll go from there. I want to talk about that.
Evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jim Manning with Gosman Moore. Worked with Scott on the project. And the dehumidification systems on this project, since the building was originally constructed, have undergone, the technology has undergone a lot of changes and it's progressed from a mechanical type of dehumidification to a desiccant type of dehumidification where the moisture is absorbed in a silica gel in a wheel as the outside air passes over it. And then it progresses to a spot where a burner or some other heat source then evaporates and takes the moisture away and discharges it back to the outside. As Scott had mentioned, it's, it's really important for the energy use of the ice surface. Something is going to take the moisture out of the building and if it's the ice sheet doing it, that's a very expensive proposition, which is why municipalities with ice rinks or stores with supermarkets invest in dehumidification equipment so that they can control the amount of moisture within the building by taking away that moisture before it enters the building. So, the first phase was to, there's a couple of different technologies that can be used. One is utilizing a gas burner to be able to remove that moisture out of the, out of the silica gel. The other is a more expensive system which utilizes a heat pump and a lower temperature airstream, if you will, to be able to evaporate that moisture. I believe in working with, with the arena, their preference would be to the less expensive system. It looks like that can be incorporated, you know, into the nearby construction. We looked at putting at those systems on the roof, but it's probably more cost-effective to put those systems down onto grade and screen them so that you don't have the expenses of dealing with it up on top of the roof as well as the maintenance of those is a lot more simple by having them more accessible for building maintenance personnel. Also, sensing the importance of that dehumidification, they talked about requesting a desiccant dehumidification unit for the Blue Line Club Arena, which also operates during, you know, those shoulder seasons when your outside conditions are, are humid and moisture needs to be removed before it's brought into the building for ventilation purposes. So, that was basically that first phase of, of the, of the project where we looked at a couple of different units and their installation and recommended such to the, to the arena staff.
Yep. So, so that just, really just summarizes that first phase of the improvements, which would be all focused on dehumidification. And then the second phase would be looking at your replacement of your refrigeration systems. So, looking at options two, and if you did some minimal improvements to your refrigeration system at this time, we're probably looking at extending the life of those systems anywhere from three to 10 years out. That both of those systems were constructed with high-quality industrial-grade equipment. You have very good maintenance out there, so those systems should easily last you, you know, three to 10 more years. Keeping the systems tight will be important because of the shortage, potential shortage of R22 or potential increase in cost of R22 will be important as well. So, so we didn't see the ice system replacement as being a high priority at this time, but something you certainly want to start planning for. So, with that, I guess I'll answer any questions you might have on the report or on the facility.
Have any questions? Councilmember Brahman.
Thank you. I'm not an engineer, but trying to keep up with all your, your discussions and explanation of how we're gonna improve this facility. You know, the, the issue of making ice in Minnesota is ongoing and I'm just curious, has there been any new technology in the engineering field to capture the power of the cold and to use that to freeze the ice?
Yeah.
I know a heat pump, a heat pump works.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be great if we had some type of control on our refrigerators in our homes that we could take power with the outside cold air and cool our appliances too or other news electricity, but I'm just wondering, is there anything in that line that's new and innovated? You mentioned Anchorage, Alaska.
Mm-hmm.
And that frightened me right away.
Yeah, they're a little bit cooler than here, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, we, we have looked at putting that they call air coolers outside to capture some of that cold temperature and use it inside the facility. And really, all of our analysis that we've done so far shows that anything really south of Duluth, it does not pay to have, to put the money into that, those types of systems because there's certain times of the year, and even when it warms up during the wintertime, that, that system would not be adequate to serve the facility. You would still need all that infrastructure of a, of a full-size refrigeration system in order to serve your facility. So it's certainly a good idea and something that we keep our eye on with, as technology changes, but at this point, there isn't a technology available, so.
That was a long shot, I just...
No, no, it's good, that was a very good question, so certainly that's something that you think would be useful here.
You mentioned the option two might prolong our, our larger investments of upgrades for a period of two to five, 10 years. Could you explain just what that would entail?
Sure. So, as I was stating, both, both refrigeration systems are very well-built, the compressors, the vessels, the piping, all industrial-grade equipment, which is great. We're very familiar with the type of equipment that's in there that was built and provided by Holston Ice Rinks. They designed many different, many, many systems, over 400 in the United States, and every one of them was very well-built. So you have great, great equipment that's there. So that's a good building block. So really, option two, the, the lower-cost option of two is to just, just do some major, not major, but do some renovations of your existing equipment such as rebuilding each compressor. It's like a car engine, so you take it apart, rebuild the gaskets and so forth, take a look at the pistons. Looking, you know, looking for leaks, repairing leaks, adding a little refrigerant to your system. It's just, it's, it's a little bit more than you would do on a, on a typical maintenance program and that would help assure that your system is leak-free, that your, your equipment is running as efficiently as possible. The second option two is to, to do a little bit more, to take the next step and really to replace the existing compressors that you have right now. So each, each refrigeration system has two big 100, 125 horse compressors. Each of those compressors are, they're built by York and they're no longer manufactured. They're certainly industrial-grade, they're heavy-duty, but the parts are getting harder and harder to get. So the next step would be replace those two compressors with a new compressor or two new compressors. Those are machines that you could certainly take and salvage and put into a new system down the road, so it wouldn't be a waste of money for you to put that money into that system now. Another thing you could do would be to just purchase another compressor just like that because there's a lot of them coming out of the ice arenas right now. There's probably, you know, five to 10 every year that come out with renovation projects, so to purchase another used compressor, keep that on hand for parts and so forth. So, there's different options there, but the main thing is just to have some type of backup parts for those systems. So it's, it's money that, some money you would put in there that you would not recover if you replaced your system out, but there's other more major components like the compressors that if you purchase those, we could take that out of that system in the future and use it for a new, new system.
Thank you.
And we'd be mindful of that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just clarification on the R22. I thought there was a deadline like 2018 or something like that. So with what you're proposing, if we make improvements to it, what happens if we can't get the refrigerant?
Yeah, R22 is, has been a very popular refrigerant, so if you remember, I don't know, maybe 10 years back, eight years back, R12 was, was kind of phased out, used it in air conditioning and car systems and so forth. R12 is still available to some extent, used R12 or reclimated R12. R22 is much more widespread use than R12 was even, so chances of, of not being able to get R22 would be pretty slim after 2020. I think that'll be around for some time. At some point, also, you could purchase a drop-in type refrigerant that's, has very similar properties to R22 and use your exact same system that you have now and just change out the refrigerant, which isn't a cheap process. That still is, you know, you're probably still looking at $75,000 or something to just change refrigerants, but nonetheless, that's another option.
Second clarification, you talked about dehumidification, dehumidification system in the Cardinal Arena, but then you also talked about the Blue Line Club, but those figures aren't on the, the information that you gave us? Is that correct?
Right. That was something that was discussed after the report was finished and I think right before the time for the budget, so that is not included in your tables shown in the executive summary. So the Blue Line Club dehumidification system is about $300,000 to, to add a dehumidification to that system, to that arena. So if you look at Table B in your executive summary... So, if you look at Table B in your executive summary, if you add $300,000 to your total of $503,000, that's, that would come up with your budget for Phase One HVAC improvements.
The three columns.
Yeah, right. Cardinal, yeah, I'm just looking at Cardinal Arena plus the $300,000.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report. Thank you for the good work that you did for us. We appreciate it. Thank you for being here tonight. And Troy, thank you and your staff for the work you do out there and being ever diligent in keeping that place running. So, the longer we can keep it going under the existing system, the better for all of us. So, thank you for your hard work. So, thanks, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Labor Relations Committee. Councilmember Aman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We had a meeting January 28th. There were no public comments. We discussed the city assessor's vacancy. City Clerk Kevin Halliday reviewed the recruitment steps taken to fill the position of city assessor. To date, no applicants have been received. Ongoing advertising of the open position includes West Central Tribune, Minnesota Works statewide site, the League of Minnesota Cities bulletin, and the Minnesota Association of Assessing Officers website. Staff recommend soliciting proposals for contractual agreement for appraising agricultural, commercial, and industrial properties of the city and conducting sales ratio studies for compliance with the Minnesota Department of Revenue standards for calendar year 2015. Advertising for a full-time assessor will continue. Staff will also advertise for an appraiser two position to maintain adequate levels of trained staff for the listed parcels. There was a motion made and seconded to authorize staff to initiate contractual arrangements for commercial appraising and advertise for an appraiser two position, all while continuing the advertising of a full-time city assessor's position. And the motion carried and I would move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Nelson, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would just like to hear from Administrator Stevens since she wasn't able to be at that meeting. There were some comments that were made, listening to the recording about work with the county and some of those types of things. So, I'm just wanting to clarify that this is the direction that she wanted, was hoping to go, and if she has anything to add about comments that were made during the meeting.
Councilmembers, wow. City Administrator Stevens.
Yes, this is the recommendation of staff. The city clerk and I worked together on this recommendation to proceed in this fashion. We have pursued a variety of advertisements. We have also worked with the county. Clearly, the city had an opportunity to work with the county assessing a couple of years prior and chose not, the city council chose not to go down that path and merge the assessing departments. And so, it is our recommendation that because we cannot, we have not been able to find somebody at that higher level, that we think we might be more successful at finding somebody at more of an entry and mid-level assessing background and then the ability to train that person going forward while having to also contract for some of that work that is not available to be done by our current staff.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm okay with that. I know there was a comment made about whether someone from the county could assist with this and also about perhaps contracting with our staff that just retired. And so, just clarification.
Those may be possibilities that we can, I do not believe it is possible for us to contract with the Kandu High County. I don't believe they have that, those individuals that are able to do that. It may be possible to contract with a former employee of the city, but we would also look at other potential contracts as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay, discussion and discussion. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Item four was the review of contracts for legal services. The, I offered an overview of the two contracts for legal services, a criminal contract with Anderson Law Services, which ends in December 31st this year, and also a civil contract with Flattery and Hood. Then that particular agreement requires a 98 notice by the firm if they desire to terminate the contract. I requested details of the forfeiture funding breakdowns. The forfeiture funding breakdowns was when I reviewed the contracts and the criminal, the criminal attorney firm, Mr. Anderson, there is a percentage that is of funds that is kept by the municipality and by the attorney, and some goes to the state, which I was not aware of. And we asked for an explanation of that, which is not listed in the minutes and it should be. We asked for an explanation or detail of that amount and the accounting of it also. And we are also going to be discussing the issue, well, the firms, we're going to be inviting them to a future meeting to continue the discussion. First of all, is to see how they're doing, how it's working out. This was a new change for us approximately three years ago, and we want to get feedback from both groups and from the council and from staff on whether or not there's ways we can improve on our legal services and make things better. Councilmember Anderson noted that the finance committee were reviewing the legal budget, so fiscal details will be forthcoming. What's also not mentioned is, minute there was, I think it was Councilman Christensen brought up the issue that the 2014 budget was for the legal assistance, the legal costs for their firms that we alluded here to earlier, also plus the labor attorney, what the accounting is of that, and we're asking for an account of that also. But to date, I don't know if Mr. Oakins is in here, we were also asking for how much we're over-budget for 2014 on our legal, our legal budget. This item was for information only, so we're going to be discussing the issue of overage and to see how it took place. My comment made the other evening was when I previously said on the city council and the finance committee, anytime there was an overage in a line item, we are alerted to the fact and appropriate measures were given so that we're not writing blank checks or checks and not having the appropriate fund or money in that, in that account. So, I question how this happened, but we'll be discussing how it came about at the labor relations meeting in another week from now. Item number five was workforce planning. I raised the issue of the importance of succession planning in the organization, specifically the transfer of institutional knowledge in the organization. Committee reviewed workforce planning documents submitted by each department of the city in 2007. Committee members pointed to the outdated data and suggested the plan should be updated biannually. It was suggested to consider a program whereby in-house staff could job shadow supervisory positions to determine if that employee would want the job when a vacancy presents itself. Following discussion, Councilmember Christians moved to direct the administrator to update the workforce succession plan as soon as possible. Mr. Dawkins seconded the motion, which carried. I'd like to also add to that, that the succession plan was also related to all staff, employees, and city administrator. And what I brought up is what-if scenario. What if something should happen or when somebody retires, how we're going to be able to move the duties and responsibilities back and forth so that we have a smooth transition or we're not going to have chaos if we have three departments retiring at one time? And we know this has happened. We've talked about it for several years, and I understand that Mick Schmidt, talking with Mr. Christensen earlier, he said that there was a, Mr. Schmidt, our former city administrator, had a succession plan that was, he completed prior to, I believe, back in 2010. I haven't seen that, but it's somewhere in the June, in the June minutes of 2010. If we go back there and look at that, we'll be reviewing that again at the, at the Labor Relations Committee meeting. New business.
Did you want to add to that motion?
I would move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Nelson.
I'd just like to seek some clarification. The document that was included with that agenda was referenced as workforce planning. And as I looked back through that, there were actually some really good things that were in there from different departments with that. However, I think we need to, before we send the staff off to do this, I think we need to seek some clarification with what it is we're actually looking for, if there is other documentation out there. I'll use Mr. Peterson's department, for example. And on the example that's in there, he listed all his staff. He also listed to choose not, or they chose not, to declare a date that they expected to retire. I think staff have a right to do that, and so I'm wondering if we're going to go through the motions again of doing this, you know, what it is exactly that we're looking for. Also, in that document, it referred to not only succession planning or workforce, workforce planning, but when someone leaves, you can take that and take a look at how does the work get redistributed? That's part of what we were trying to do with our organizational study that we threw out. I think this council needs to go back to that organizational study and say, what do we want this city to look like? If someone leaves, we're not just going to replace that person. I would hope that we would look at the work that is being done, their job description and how it could be looked. That, to me, is succession planning to some degree. But everybody has the right to look for a job. I was appalled. I listened to this tape three times of this meeting, and the conversation that went on at this meeting, to me, was totally inappropriate, unprofessional, and I am appalled. And I think this council needs to take a step back and look at, the best workplace, workforce planning you can do is to have a, an environment where people want to work, where people want to come to work, where they're challenged, and the things that were said are inappropriate. Now, council members have a right to their own opinion, but so do other council members. And I think what was said, and I would encourage this community, if you haven't listened to it, or the people at this table, if they haven't listened to that tape, to listen to it, because it is inappropriate. I think we are crossing the line. There are so many good things that need to be done in this community, and we need to find a way for the staff to work together. And this witch hunt that we're on to blame someone and to find someone needs to stop, and I hope this community will take a look at it. There was a comment made there about our administrator. And there are people in this community who are relieved that she did not get that job, that we have been given a second chance to utilize her talents, and we are picking and putting down and complaining. And I think there's a lot more things that this council needs to discuss about workforce planning than just to send the staff off and say, let's update the report.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, wish that the entire community would listen to that labor committee meeting and then read the minutes that we were presented with tonight. Mr. Dawkins often brings up a state statute or a League of Minnesota Cities statute that tells us how to do the minutes to each meeting. They should be complete, concise, to the point. They don't have to be audio verbatim. These minutes tonight don't reflect that meeting. I was the one that brought up the administrator. Since you brought it up, I will speak to it. Our administrator applied for a job in another city, was one of the top three finalists. We, the city council, the city of Willmar, found out in the newspaper about a week before they announced the final decision to who to hire. We could have been without an administrator in one week, folks. One week. That could happen next week, next month. We need a full-time administrator, not one that's looking for a job. That was my point at the meeting. It's all facts. We've just been lectured by another councilperson, and you're about to tell me I'm out of order. Well, I'm not out of order. I'm speaking to the minutes of the meeting. The other councilperson was lecturing. We need to be ready for when this happens, not if. Bruce Peterson's going to retire, we know it. When? Within the next two to five years, probably. Mr. Oakins, Mr. Halliday, three competent, great individuals that have been running this city for almost 30 years. We need to be ready, either somebody from within their department to step up, or how are we going to find someone outside? We're looking for a city assessor right now. They're not on the market. We're told that they're, we don't pay enough. Maybe it's time to look at converging the two assessing departments. We don't even talk about it. We need to talk about how we're going to be prepared to do these things, and there's nothing wrong with talking about it. You know, I keep saying many times that politics is about ideas. It isn't about you and me or you, it isn't about people. Throw the idea out there, talk about it, either vote it up or down. I'm talking about an idea of being prepared for when the administrator leaves, when Bruce Peterson leaves, when Steve Oakins, when they retire. We need to be prepared. We keep running up against a brick wall and then deciding what to do. What are we going to do? We used to be a city that controlled events that happened. I tell you, the last three years, events have been controlling this city and our decisions, and I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Dawkins, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just reinforce my comments of so many times, more complete meeting minutes in accordance with Chapter 27. If we get complete meeting minutes, then we don't have to worry about recalling anything verbally because we'll have complete meeting minutes. I'm not sure why that's so difficult, but I think it's important, and I'll continue to press for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I'm not interested in getting into an argument, but I do want to correct something the Council Member Christensen said, that when the city administrator was looking for a job, that we found out by, by a newspaper. I believe that we had an email that told us in advance of that coming out in the newspaper. And I, and I think it is very wrong to make an assumption, a presumption, or anything that because someone looked for a job one time, that they are continuing to look. We can't be making that kind of accusation. That does nothing for our organization. That is wrong. I said it at the, at the labor meeting, and I will continue to say it. We can't be doing that.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Aman.
Well, it's good to have this, it's good to get it out, and this is all healthy. I look back at whoever, whichever way you want to debate it or talk about it, this is healthy discussion. How about if we solve the problem? And we talked about succession planning for over two years. I've asked the labor committee several times, where is succession plan? I was just informed recently, Marv, talking to you prior to you being sworn in, that they have a written succession plan. It's like, wow, I've been talking for two years and I haven't seen the written succession plan. Now, I understand there's one for 2010, and we've got the 2007 one. Now, I just, I just want to do our job. I just want to do our job and want to make a smooth transition. This is nothing more, this is not against any individual or when they're going to retire or portion of their retirement. This is just simply about getting a consensus and how we're going to take care of it, getting the professional staff and the administrator to work out a what-if scenario if somebody should die suddenly. How are we going to handle it? You know, you can, you can run and scatter, but it's, you're better off if you're a little prepared. And that was the intent of this discussion. We're going to continue discussing it. We're going to value input and from everybody, and we're going to just try to get this job done. But no way this should be held as a hostage or a hostile environment or a discussion. This is, this is nothing more than just getting the job done and being prepared, and that's what I want to reiterate.
Councilmember Nelson.
At our last city council... At our last city council meeting, we said there was not going to be a labor meeting, so this labor meeting was scheduled very quickly and with the knowledge that our administrator was out of town. So, I would like just to give her the opportunity that if she would like to speak to, I know the document that was given to us is from two thousand and seven, but I'd like to just speak to the work that's been done with succession planning prior to us talking about making a motion to update the plan. I'd like to know where we're at.
I'm going to hold that discussion for now. Other discussion? I have a few things I want to say about this. I ran on the fact of us getting along, of us working as a team. That's what I said I wanted to do. I talked to every one of you sitting at this table. I told you that in the conversations we had, that I wanted us to work together. I received twelve messages on Friday asking me if I had listened to the labor. I had not listened to it. I had one person talk to me in person. I called councilmember Christensen. I was at the doctor's office. I ran into an individual that said to me, Marv, you need to listen to that. I had a call into councilmember Christensen. I took his call. We had a conversation. I told him I'd read the minutes. I was satisfied with what I read in the minutes. Subsequent to that, I received five additional messages at home in regards to this. After looking at that, I then listened to it, and I as well am concerned about some of the things that were said. I had a conversation with the city administrator this morning in regards to this. I, for one, want to keep the city administrator. I, for one, know that working as a city employee, you look for jobs elsewhere. You try to prepare yourself in the event that something happens so that there are greener pastures. When my mother-in-law became ill, we moved back here to take care of her, my father, and my father-in-law. That's what we did. When I went to the fire chief in Burnsville and told him I was looking for a job, he said, good, you're going to go back home, you're going to take care of your family. That's what we're supposed to do. My conversation with the city administrator this morning is she's looking out for her family. That's what she was doing.
Mr. Mayor.
She was told that in her last evaluation, things weren't going well. She wanted to explore options. That's what she did. I had a conversation with her. I asked her very kindly, when I was elected, the day after I met with her, I said, I'd like you to consider staying at least six months, if not a year. I don't know if she's looking for another job. I'll defer at this point to the city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, in the future.
Deferring to the city administrator.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
That was mine, too.
This book that we adopted, Standard Code of Parliament Procedure, states that the presider-
Clarification on what the point of order is?
I think he's getting to that.
Can I go?
Yep, go ahead.
State what it is.
The presider, the chair of this meeting, which is yourself, Mr. Mayor, is not to debate or make any motions. And I was going to ask, what are we debating? This is the labor committee minutes.
I did not-
There was a motion made here, and I don't know if we've even voted on that motion yet.
Your point of order is, we're, we're discussing it, is what we're doing, and we're discussing what was talked about at that portion of the meeting, and in my opinion, it does not, your point of order does not stand.
You are allowed-
You could certainly, you could certainly call the question. City Administrator Stevens, would you like to make any comments?
I guess the comment I would make is that certainly I did apply for the position of the city administrator of Lakeville. I am proud of my career, I'm proud of the work that I do, and proud of the abilities that I have and bring to other cities, and that certainly attracts attention of other cities and other communities. And the opportunity in Lakeville represented an opportunity that my family and I felt was a good opportunity to pursue. I think career decisions and people's careers path are very personal choices. It's unfortunate that in the field in which I work, that part, that is a more public search than anybody in the private sector has to go through. I have a contract with the city that requires that I would provide thirty days' notice. I certainly am enough of a professional to do so. So, the assertion that the city would have been left without an administrator with one week's notice is just a false assertion, and disappointing that somebody would even make that or challenge my professionalism in that. I have almost twenty years of working in local government and professionalism. I'm well-regarded by my peers in the field. I serve, I have served on boards of directors for my profession. I serve on a board of directors for the League of Municipal, Municipal of Minnesota Cities, as well as the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I think those recognize the leadership and the abilities that I have. I work very hard for the city of Wilmer. It's a wonderful community with a lot of good people, and then my future career plans are just that, my future plans. And I will make them in concert with my husband and make that path known. And certainly, I think, just in my career, individuals, I have also, just as the mayor spoke, I've seen individuals pursue opportunities that they felt were good for them and for their family. I have never held it against an individual that has worked with or for me when they do that, and it's disappointing that, that individuals would do that in my case. Thank you.
I'll call for the question, Mr. Mayor.
Just second to that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number six, I inquired, is if one insurance policy could be offered for all city employees, or if negotiating practice limited that option. The city administrator could update the committee at the next meeting, and this was for information only. That hasn't been discussed, and I think for two years or so, but we have not brought it up in the labor negotiation contracts. I think it's time, maybe, we just see what our options are and see if that's something that's approachable to both sides. With that, I'll move to file the minutes. Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to file the minutes, all those in favor of-
Mayor, I would seek-
Councilmember Nelson.
I would seek amendment to the minutes. It's my understanding that councilmember Johnson was in attendance at the meeting, and also the attorney, Anderson, was at that, and they are not listed on the minutes.
Good point.
You okay with that, when you made the motion?
Sure, they were there.
Second. Okay. Other discussion? Holdings in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, considering, consideration of an ordinance to, an amendment to purchase agreement and convey city-owned property. Charlene?
Yes, Rice Hospital has worked to sell their, the Rice Rehabilitation Building to CDS Investments LLC. That property is actually, is actually titled in the ownership of the city of Wilmer. And that requires that the, by city charter, that the city council adopt an ordinance to convey the land and conduct a public hearing. The Planning Commission did review and approve the property sale at their January fourteenth meeting. It's been also approved by the Rice Hospital Board of Directors. We're asking this evening that you set a public hearing for February seventeenth for consideration of the ordinance to convey city-owned property, and then also approve the amendment to the purchase agreement. And we did receive the purchase agreement, a copy of that is not, the amendment is included, but not the original purchase agreement. We finally did receive that late today, so I would ask that you approve that pending the city attorney's review and acceptance of the purchase agreement. And again, it is primarily to schedule the hearing on the seventeenth. No closing or anything can occur before you've had the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've never used that facility. I'm wondering, where is it? Where is the rehab building, Rice Hospital?
It is the, it is the building essentially adjacent to the Conway-Duth and Schmiesing facility, and that's-
To the east?
Yes.
North?
North. Just to the north.
Should be the clinic.
Just to the north of that, and it's the intent of Rice, of Rice Hospital and Rehab to build a new facility and-
I didn't see an Anderson here, and I didn't know where it is, so, okay, thank you.
Other discussion?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Amen.
What's the benefit, financial benefit? And is that something we need to be concerned about by once we turn that over?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
What, what the financial impact is, is that what your question is? What's the financial impact? I mean, the, the sales price was in here, but I don't, I'm not seeing it.
Believe the sales price, I'm looking for that information, I'm sorry. Thank you. The sales price of the property is two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, this is a building that Rice owns, correct, but that the city has title to?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, the facility has been owned and operated by Rice Hospital. The city has title to it, and so, again, under the charter requirements, it's required that in order to convey that, that there be a public hearing by the city council.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Reschedule improvement hearing. Sean? Who? Charlene, you want to handle this? Oh, there you go.
He's back.
Sorry about that. Mayor, Mayor Calvin and members of council, at this time, I'd like to propose that we extend the date of that scheduled improvement hearing, which was February seventeenth, to the first meeting in March, to allow us more time to prepare for that and have the projects and better cost estimates available.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Holdings in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to give a brief report on our legislative day, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. On January twenty-eighth, the city administrator, councilmember Nelson, and I attended the great, annual Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Day in St. Paul. This was the first time I'd attended this particular legislative meeting, and the second time for councilmember Nelson. There were almost a hundred elected and appointed members from forty different cities that were in attendance. The morning meeting began with a general board meeting, where Ms. Stevens serves on the GM, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Board, currently as the co-chair of the labor committee. Following the board meeting, staff and lobbyists briefed us on policy issues for the current legislative session. We heard about LGA, transportation, environment, bonding, and workforce housing. We then heard from Senate Majority Leader Tom Bach and House Tax Chair Greg Davids and their respective views on the legislative issues facing greater Minnesota, greater Minnesota. I'd also like to give a brief summary of the platform, which was included in your council materials. Number one is to restore LGA funds to the two thousand and two levels. All of you are aware that our numbers are dramatically different than they were back in two thousand and two for LGA. And Senator Coonan, who is our local senator, he has authored the Senate bill to replace those funding levels, and so we're grateful to him for that. It's about forty-five point five million dollars over the biennium. And so, thanks to Senator Coonan for carrying that, that bill and authoring that. Economic development in greater Minnesota, funding for the Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program. This is a program that is available for all of greater Minnesota, and this area of the state, southwestern Minnesota, has not received any of those fundings, and so it'd be great to see that. We think that there might be something coming out of Midwest for this, but we'll wait and see. It might be coming down the road. There's been some preliminary talk about that, but nothing has been put into paper yet about that, so. Broadband funding. Councilmember Dokken sent out an email earlier today talking about that, and again, these are for shovel-ready, ready projects. And of course, out here in western Minnesota, we don't have any shovel-ready projects right now. That is a huge issue for our businesses here within our community, but actually, right in the city of Wilmer, we have pretty good broadband. But when you get out into our rural areas, even as close as Pryam, that's a huge issue for us, and so we need that addressed. Some of our local businesses want to have conductivity back to their other business locations. They don't have that currently in town. Employer-focused job training programs, establishing a workforce housing fund with deed. Those are all things on the economic development side for greater Minnesota. Again, a comprehensive transportation package that was include, that includes funding for corridors of commerce and funding for municipal roads and bridges, allowing us as municipalities to actually get some funding for those areas. This would be something that would be brand-new for us, so that would be great. And then addressing the overreaching regulations of the MPCA, that's kind of what we heard about today when we heard our report on our wastewater treatment plan. That's another thing that we talked about. Finally, we met individuals, Representatives Baker and Senator Coonan. Representative Baker and the senator were also able to attend a dinner that followed. Over seventy legislators were in attendance for the dinner, showing that rural Minnesota really matters this year. And again, if you're watching any of this stuff at the legislature, they're talking about this is a year for greater Minnesota, so that's a great thing. It was a busy and full day. We left, left Wilmer at seven-thirty in the morning, and we got back home about ten-thirty, so we spent a full day down there, so. It was well worth the time. I appreciate both councilmember Nelson and our city administrator attending. And again, I would encourage all of you to get involved in that process, and next year, try to put it on your calendar and see if you'd be able to attend as well. I know councilmember Amen has expressed some interest in attending that in the past. It would be great if, if we get other councilmembers that would be willing to attend that, so. I would take any questions anybody might have in regards to that. Okay, thank you. Chief Feld, could you give us a brief update on the polar plunge that happened on Saturday out at Green Lake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to report that on Saturday was the eleventh annual polar bear plunge for Special Olympics, sponsored by the Wilmer Police Department and the Kanawha County Sheriff's Department. It's in cooperation with law enforcement. It's a fundraiser for Special Olympics where we cut a hole in the ice and find people that are brave enough to jump through. This year, there were three hundred and ninety-four people that jumped in, into Green Lake, and seventy-two thousand dollars was raised for Special Olympics. We've been very fortunate with the support of the community and sponsors and people willing to plunge in the past few years. Since the event started in two thousand and five, there's been over a half million dollars that's been raised just in the Wilmer and Spicer area for Special Olympics, and with this plunge, a little over three thousand people have jumped in the lake, so. We appreciate the community's support, the city's support, all the city staff, that's volunteers from the police department and sheriff's department, and other emergency services that helped make the event happen. And Mayor Calvin, I know you have jumped in before. We thank you for doing that.
It's always a refreshing experience. Thank you for your, you and your staff for putting that together, making it happen. Thanks for all your attention there for Special Olympics. We appreciate that, so. Also, there's a number of boards and commissions that we have openings on, and we'll get this out to councilmembers as well, but we have two openings available in the charter commission, two openings are available in the zoning appeals board, and then the human rights commission, which we are reestablishing, for the human rights commission, there's up, we can have up to fifteen members for that, but we need a minimum of seven. So, if people are interested in that, and what I'd like to see on that is on the human rights commission, that we actually try to have that not as a reactive, but a proactive board, so we're out there actually looking at things that we can do positively within the community, so not just taking complaints, but actually being a proactive side of that. There's some really good information on the internet if you want to look at what some other city human rights commissions do. There's some pretty fabulous stuff out there. All interested individuals must be residents of the city of Wilmer. Citizens can download a simple application from the city's website. Interested individuals can also contact myself or any member of the council, or the city administrator for additional information, or feel free to contact our city clerk as well. So, with that, announcements of city council committee meeting dates. Finance?
Finance will meet Monday, February ninth, at four forty-five.
February ninth at four forty-five. Public Works, Public Safety?
Tuesday, February tenth, four forty-five.
February tenth, four forty-five. Labor?
Eleventh, four forty-five.
The eleventh at four forty-five. Community Development?
Thursday, February twelfth, four forty-five.
Okay. Okay. Anything else to come before the goodie order? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious as to the North Entrance Welcome Sign to Willmar. Are we doing anything with that? Is it, I mentioned...
We're waiting on insurance the last we heard, but...
I had mentioned a few months ago that we should be, maybe looking at a new design, something a little bigger, instead of the exact same one. And I don't know where we're at, but it should be in a committee somewhere.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, Councilmember Christensen, we're actually soliciting numbers or quotes right now to, at this point, we're going down the road of matching the other signs, therefore not having to change all the signs to match. And so, at this point, we're waiting for bids or quotes to come in to replace that as is. It's got the base, it is still there, and then submit those numbers to insurance.
Reason to ask is technology's changed, and these LED signs are changing, and you're going to see more and more cities that have them at their entrances, so they can put on announcement of what's going on, "Welcome to Willmar, Tuesday this, Wednesday, April this." And it's something I think we need to be thinking about. Those prices have come down also on those signs. They used to be quite expensive. They're a little more affordable these days, but I think it at least needs to be talked about. And we wouldn't have to change all of them at the same time. I mean, we start with that one and then wait for someone to run into the next one. But I would like to discuss it at a meeting somewhere.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Christensen, we can sure bring that to committee. At this point, I was, or up to date, I was going under the impression that we would want to match all the signs, and so we can bring that forth and have a further discussion on it.
Mayor Cal.
On this issue?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
If we're going to look at that at committee, it might be helpful to bring the information from how those signs were done to begin with, and who the donors were, and when that was done, because I know there was, it was part of a group, marketing group, I believe, that put that together. So if that information can be brought forward along with that, that might be helpful.
TC's 1987.
Didn't Ace Sign make those?
They helped.
We do have a local vendor that does supply that product, so if you're not aware of who that is, we can talk afterwards and then give you the name of that company, so. Okay. Bruce Peterson, our Planning and Development Director. It's his birthday today. He probably wouldn't want everybody being told that, but he's a young, 60, I believe, if my information is right. And so he has served our city very well. We're very fortunate to have Bruce. And Bruce, I know you're watching because you can't stay away. Thank you for your years of service. We really do appreciate it. So thank you for serving us well, and happy birthday. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We are adjourned.